I now call the May 24, 2016 Special Counsel Meeting of the City of Riverton Order at 5:30 PM. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and after that I'll offer an invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve as members of the City Council for Riverton, Wyoming, and pray for Thy Spirit to guide and direct us tonight. Help us have insight and understanding this evening equal to our tasks that we might be able to understand the budget and figure out the things that we need to do in order to propel the city forward in the next fiscal year. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to serve and we ask for Thy guidance in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Would the City Secretary please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present and declare that we have a quorum this evening. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The item, next item is public hearing and consideration for transfer of ownership app. I don't know if I can read that. Public hearing and consideration for transfer of ownership, application of a retail liquor license from La Prairie Enterprises, Inc. to Mrs. Skidmore, Inc. City Clerk's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. I apologize that we brought this to at a special meeting. It was a matter of commonness and serving the public. She brought this in the 4th or 5th of May. It would have meant that she would have had to wait five weeks to find out whether this would pass or not so she could serve liquor. So this is an application from Mrs. Susan Skidmore. Mayor, that's exactly why she changed it to Mrs. Susan Skidmore because no one can pronounce La Pier. So she is simply wanting to transfer the retail liquor license from La Pier Enterprises to Mrs. Skidmore Incorporated. It has been advertised in accordance with state statutes and the fee has been paid.
Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion we open the public hearing.
Seconding.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record. There being no one here to speak, the Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. And the public hearing is now closed. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license to Mrs. Skidmore, Inc.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we approve the liquor license to Mrs. Susan Skidmore. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Okay, do I need to use this gavel to adjourn this meeting?
No. I think we need a motion.
Whatever you want.
Need into work session though.
You want to... Okay. So the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn... Well, we should have done that by motion. Okay, so the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the Special Counsel meeting.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion we convene into work session.
Second.
Anybody, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mayor votes aye and we are done with that and the time is 7:35 PM.
5:35.
Well, 5:35 PM, shortest City Council meeting on... Okay, and so, well, I guess this is Lee's motion but we'll just jump over that, okay? So fiscal year budget presentation, City Administrator.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I'm going to be watching each of you to make sure you're not nodding off. Budget sometimes is exciting, sometimes it's not so exciting, some people. I get excited about it though, you know, numbers are kind of fun. So, good evening, I guess or good afternoon, Mayor and Council and citizens of Riverton. I'm pleased to present you tonight the City of Riverton 2016-17 Budget. That's my sense of humor. See, no one... The budget document is divided into nine sections: overview, general fund, enterprises, enterprise funds, fixed costs, administrative allocations, contract for services, employee compensation, capital, and conclusion. So here's just a little picture, a little ploy for our one-city event, the Riverton Rendezvous Rally. Remember to mark your calendars for July 15th to the 17th. So here's a budget quote of the day. It's by an unknown author. "A budget is just a method of worrying before you spend money as well as afterward." I think that's the truth. We make the best guess in our budget estimates and hope they're right and then we worry about it afterwards. So I thought I'd go through a little budget process of how we develop the budget to staff. So it's important to understand that. There's been a lot of hard work and effort going into developing the budget. It's not something that's accomplished within a couple of days or even a couple of weeks. It's almost two months scattered across a variety of different people. The process started on March 30th with a preliminary budget overview where we discussed personnel, equipment, and major capital. Included in this meeting was myself, department heads, Finance Director, HR Director, and Business Service Manager. Next, Gloria Hardman, the Finance Director, meets with all the division managers and goes over the expenditures and their needs. The budget numbers are implemented in a preliminary budget by the Finance Director continuously through the whole process. Staff had a pre-budget work session with the council to get input prior to starting the budget. Projected revenues are determined by myself and Finance. And then these projections are... And revenues and expenditures are brought in front of the team, I guess you'd say, Department Heads, Finance Director, and HR, and reviewed by the group. And we have quite a bit of discussion about that to make sure everyone feels comfortable with the numbers that we have set forth. We then combine those expenditures and revenues and see if they match. And this year, they didn't, and so then that's when we had to go through and start the process of doing some cutting back on the expenditures. This took several meetings. Many options were presented and then we agreed as a group to the cuts. We had a final budget review. Staff then developed budget worksheets to be reviewed by myself who then compiled the budget message with the help of staff. And then books were printed and distributed to the council about a week and a half ago. So many of you have read over them and come in and talked with staff about different questions. The plan is to adopt the budget on June 7th in the regular council meeting. That's just kind of a quick overview. There's a lot of other things that happen. However, you can see that it's a fairly lengthy process with lots of people involved. The City of Riverton has a total budget including capital of $21,319,443. That's a decrease of $11,931,531 from last year. So you ask why that's down? Probably the biggest one is our capital project that we had at the airport last year. And then obviously revenues are down. You have a balanced budget in front of you. It has been particularly difficult because of the decreased revenue projections. So in the budget, you have two types of funds. You have general fund and enterprise funds. A general fund is used to account for the revenues and expenditures of most tax-supported activities, such as the Police Department, which is the largest department in the general fund. Enterprise funds are business-like funds because they should be run like a business. Fees are charged for external services to cover the services provided, and those would be water, wastewater, and sanitation. I would like to thank the department heads, the division managers, and many other staff that has put a lot of effort into putting this budget together. So the City of Riverton is always fiscally responsible and that's why last year we anticipated a little downturn in the economy and we budgeted fewer revenues, specifically in sales and use tax. When revenues started to decrease, staff made some reductions to the existing budget. There were several areas that we looked at in reducing our expenditures. We put a spending freeze only making purchases that were absolutely necessary. We restricted any travel and training to ones that were already registered for. We also made cuts to individual line items such as snow removal, beautification kiosks, road materials, gas and oil, heat, diesel, vehicle and equipment maintenance. And we also reduced or eliminated some of the capital projects. We endeavor to maintain the 18.5% reserves per council policy. Revenues in all funds exceed expenses except in the airport. Airport receives money from the general fund. Out of the 31 divisions, four divisions were at 100%. Then the previous budget, 22, were at 99% or less. And one division indicated a slight increase and four increased more than five. Now, three of those four increases are in the customer service and that is because of interim pay, software maintenance increases, and moving bank charges into the division. The fourth was in the water production and that was for additional electricity for a new well and tank cleaning that is done every three years. So as we go through this, in each fund or department or division, you'll notice a little summary page in the front that gives the mission, description, revenue assumptions if applicable, and expenditure highlights. This will give some background to the department and any major changes from the prior year. We started this a couple of years ago and has proven successful to help anyone know of the changes that occurred in the last year. We still have $200,000 assigned from our general fund reserves for the North Federal Stormwater Project that will occur not in this fiscal year but next fiscal year. So reductions in savings. We had several retirements of longtime employees, which means the hiring of new employees at a lower salary provided some cost savings of $165,000 over the past 12 months. Looking forward, we have budgeted $420,000 less in salaries than that was budgeted last year. We may not fill at least four vacant positions for six to 12 months. The job duties will be managed by interims. We have also instituted to not fill vacant positions as they occur in the next year. There is a caveat with that. Some positions are critical or some departments couldn't do their job without having a whole bunch of vacant positions. And so not filling positions is where we can save the most amount of money. When we went through this process, when you talk about eliminating positions, you think of the unemployment aspect of that. You're going to pay that position about 40% for that next 12 months. So that's where we really looked at cost savings of people that were retiring or leaving and looking at not filling those positions and then we saved the full amount. In this budget, there are no step merit increases. Cell phone stipends are cut in half from 50 to 25. Travel and training reduced by 20%. Overtime reduced by at least 10%. Educational assistance was cut entirely and some seasonal positions eliminated. So the general fund revenues are estimated to be at $7,734,055. That's a decrease of over $1 million from last year. The reason for that is included in that $1 million decrease are two large transfers from reserves that were made in fiscal year 16 for capital projects that are not required this year. So that makes up the difference. The actual revenue sources that were reduced was approximately $565,000. And that's mainly in sales and use tax. Not very many increases in revenues except for slight ones in liquor licenses and cigarette tax. The largest increase comes from supplemental funding, which is the direct distribution from the state. The legislature in this last session changed the formula for distribution and this favored Riverton by an increase of $304,468. Even though supplemental funding has increased, it does not help our operations. Historically and since I've been here, we do not use supplemental funding for operations such as personnel. These are funds that are not automatic and can't be counted on. We use these funds on general fund capital projects, including airport capital and contract for services. This year, the supplemental funding was split into two payments. This provides the legislature flexibility for adjusting the distribution if state revenues continue to decline. So feel free to stop me at any point if you've got questions. I don't want to keep talking. If you have questions, just raise your hand or...
Okay, so we got an additional... Well, that's an additional $304,000.
That's right.
Okay, but that brings us to 1.2 million?
Yeah, I think it was 1.1, I think is what supplemental funding is.
And so they're going to give us half of that?
Yeah, they're going to give it half in August and then half in January.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Okay, so have we budgeted for receiving all of that?
We have.
And so in light of the fact that the Governor right now is going back to the state... Maybe they'll leave the cities and towns alone.
Yeah, they may. Yeah, it's just, it's hard to determine. I mean, if that happens for us, then we'll have to make some adjustments mid-year.
Okay, all right. Need to make adjustments in November.
In November, yeah. Well, hopefully they give us some warning to that instead of, oh, we're just not going to do that. Sales and use tax are our largest sources of revenues for the general fund. They account for 30% of revenue in the general fund. The largest decrease of $243,000 in sales tax and $200,000 in use tax based on what we budgeted last year. Grants account for 20% of the entire budget for the city. Staff oversees 23 grants. Grant management is a significant effort in making sure we comply with the conditions of the grant. And Gloria, our Finance Director has done a really great job in tracking that. We've had no findings in our audits.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
On the... We were talking earlier about the only getting half and the other half in January. The legislature has to call a... Or the Governor has to call a special session before they can do that.
Okay.
It has to be a special session.
So that's maybe a benefit for us.
Could be. Because I know, I've heard the Governor doesn't want to call one. But any legislature could call one, so.
Great, thank you. So general fund expenditures, we have 14 departments or divisions. Expenditures are down with the majority well below the 100% from last year. So please refer to those. We're going to go through those and I'll give you page numbers as we go through kind of the general fund and we'll highlight a few of the expenditure highlights. So if you start on page six, and that's Mayor and Council. Legal services went down since the EPA decision has been heard. We don't have a decision on that, but it's been heard and so we don't anticipate a whole lot of attorney fees related to that. Professional and consulting was reduced since only 25% was spent last year. We have had some ongoing costs in that professional consulting related to 422 East Main. But that has pretty much gone. We have like $25 here and there related to 422. You go to page 12 under Municipal Court.
Lee?
What?
I have a question on these expenditures for legal services. Have we budgeted for any legal services for the Archer lawsuit?
We don't... We're not going to have to pay for any of that. That all comes out of our liability.
Okay.
Yeah, so we turn that over to our insurance company and they've already assigned an attorney from LGLP.
We don't have a deductible or anything like that?
Yeah, what is it? A thousand?
Okay, so nothing significant.
Page 12, Municipal Court. We're not recommending replacing the court clerk position at this time. The deputy will be the interim. For internal controls, we'll be providing cross-training opportunities. You're going too fast here. Then you go to page 14, is Administrative Services. You'll see decreases in there due to employee retirement. Not recommending replacing two positions, Administrative Services Director and Finance Director for four to six months or more. The Finance Director will be the interim for the Administrative Services Director. Wow, this thing just flipped out on me. Sorry. Good thing I have a backup. So the Finance Director is planning to be the interim for the Administrative Services Director and she's planned to be here through almost the end of the calendar year. So at that point, we'll hire someone for the Administrative Services Director in the meantime. So we're not going to have gaps of two employees in the finance area, just so there's clear on that. I don't want people to think we're eliminating all these people in finance. We don't have anybody to do finance. Are any questions related to that?
So you have four employees in administrative services. You're losing two of those, but not all at the same time. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so the Administrative Services Director will be retiring in June and the interim will be the Finance Director until probably October when we hire someone. And then the Finance Director will be retiring at the end of the year.
So within six months?
Yeah.
It's June's next month. Go ahead.
It'll overlap enough to where it's not somebody coming on board.
That's right.
I knew with no one that's... Okay.
Exactly.
I just want to... I know we're trying to save money, but I don't want to wait till the last minute and hire somebody, say, Mark, set, go.
Yeah, you don't want someone coming in not having a clue what's going on. If you go to page 20, that's Police. We've had a reduction in ammunition of 20%. There's no new patrol cars being purchased this year. We tried every year to buy two new police cars, reductions in vehicle and equipment maintenance. And that was mainly because in that line item, we usually had all the stuff that you put on the vehicle. And so since we're not going to be buying two new ones, then we have a reduction in that line item. That's all the lights and the cages.
Your Honor. Go ahead, Mike. Is 28 officers and 13 and a half non-storn staff, is that full... Are we fully staffed in the Police Department?
Yes.
Okay. But we've lost some more expensive ones and replaced them with cheaper ones. Is that basically where the 11% savings comes from?
Yes.
So you go to page 28, Streets and Alley's. This has some decreases in street lighting, travel and training, cracked seal repair, and road materials to reflect expenditures patterns from the previous fiscal year and also to accommodate increases to the other line items. There's one new line item in the streets and alleys and that's concrete replacement. This allows for the replacement of sections of curb and gutter when residents remove and replace adjoining sections of their own sidewalk.
Your Honor, and is that over and above the 1% fund stuff?
Your Honor, that's correct. Page 30, Fleet Maintenance. Mainly in there, it's just the reduction of the personnel of the Assets Division Manager. And on page 32, Weed and Pest, elimination of one seasonal employee. Page 34, Elimination of One Seasonal Employee in the Parks Department. And then on page 36, under Community Development, we had reductions in computer supplies, books, postage, and advertising.
Your Honor. Going back to the Parks Division, you had mentioned that... How many seasonal employees are you going to hire? You said you had a reduction in seasonal employees?
We did. We still are hiring three. Yeah, still hiring... We did. We still are hiring three. Yeah, still hiring three.
Thank you. That's down from how many?
Four.
Four?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I got all these great staff that, you know, give me sign language so I can. Okay, we'll move on to the enterprise funds. City has three enterprise funds, water, wastewater, and sanitation. Enterprise funds must generate sufficient revenues to meet their operating obligations. They all meet the eighteen and a half point five percent reserves or more. This particular slide shows the revenues and expenditures in the enterprise funds. This is just the operational budget, not including capital. So as you can see, all the enterprise funds revenues exceed expenditures. I left the airport off because it's truly not an enterprise fund because it's not self-sufficient. It requires a transfer from the general fund. Monies cannot be transferred from one fund to another without an inter-fund loan and repayment schedule. These funds are supposed to be self-sufficient. The projected excess funds goes towards reserves for future capital projects. Any questions on those? So here are some expenditure highlights in the enterprise funds. If you go to page forty-six, water fund. Both electricity and electricity to water well line items were increased. This is what I discussed before with the new well, tank, and two booster stations recently installed. That's gonna require additional electricity. Building maintenance was increased to crack seal the water treatment parking lot. And general maintenance was increased to perform a power usage study, making outstanding repairs to a wellhouse and to clean the two million gallon tank that's done every three years.
How many water tanks do we have that we have to clean?
I believe we got two, don't we?
Your honor, technically, we're required to clean all of our tanks. This one is interesting in the sense that we finally are able to actually drain the two million gallon tank and clean it without hiring divers to do so. So we do rotate all of our tanks. Obviously, the two million gallon tanks that we have, the two of them, are our most expensive expenditures cleaning.
So they have to be cleaned every three years. So we have them on some kind of rotation, so we're not all at one time or something, I assume?
Your honor, dependent on budget, but that is correct. We have a sanitary survey inspection by the EPA every, several years to ensure that our infrastructure is capable of ensuring that we deliver clean water to our residents. We just had that completed. And so we try and make sure that we comply with all EPA sanitary survey requirements.
So I'm trying to do a little inventory here. We've got, so there's a tank on High School Hill.
That is correct.
One at Hill Street. The overhead tank at the college.
Correct.
The new one that we just built on Griffey Hill, and the one up on Airport Hill near the, what, the?
For the Job Corps?
No, the one up on Airport Hill near the weather station.
Correct, there's that one.
That's it, though. And the one we cleaned is the one on the Airport Hill.
That's correct. Well, no, let me go back. The one that we are cleaning is the one at the water treatment plant, the one on Airport Hill, the new one for the Job Corps.
Okay.
Because that's so new, we don't need to. We're also gonna try and tack on a cleaning of the CWC tank that has not been cleaned in some time. That was brought up in our recent sanitary survey inspection.
Okay, and I forgot the one at the water treatment plant. So there's six.
Okay, page forty-nine, collection and distribution. You'll notice this one a couple times in your packet, and that's just because collection and distribution in our department covers both water and sewer. So they cover both those enterprise funds. You'll see decrease in building maintenance, ditch maintenance, water assessment taxes, and fire hydrant installation line items. Increases in tool supplies, safety supplies, and direct water assessment by the irrigation district. Water assessment was because of Riverton Valley irrigation districts assessment increase this year. Wastewater collection has two new line items, lift station maintenance and sewer lateral repair. Pursuant to the municipal code, it's the city's responsibility to assume the cost of replacing laterals made of unsuitable materials. Lift stations continue to age and require more regular maintenance. Substantial increase in vehicle and equipment maintenance to accommodate the replacement of four hoses for the division's vector truck. Any questions on those?
Mr. Larson?
Are we talking about Leesburg pipe?
Yeah, Orangeburg.
Orangeburg? Did we ever find a substitute that we could put inside it and call it good?
Your honor, we can do pipe bursting projects where we can burst the pipe and follow it through with a bore machine with an appropriate pipe, like a PVC. That's probably the best way to do it in place, is just through that pipe bursting.
Okay. Is that cost effective? First drilling and digging and re-burrying and all the rest of that?
Your honor? It depends on the linear foot amount that you're gonna be doing.
Page seventy-one, sanitation fund. Decreases in container maintenance and tool and supplies. Landfill charges were slightly increased to accommodate the potential increase to solid waste tonnage should the solid waste reduce its recycling program. We just increased the landfill charges just in case the recycling program were to go away and we would have to then put them all in the landfill.
Your honor. Go ahead.
I can't get my head around that. How can we cost more when it's costing us, when we're gonna save by decreasing the collection of it?
Well, we'll have reductions in the other areas, but this is just the landfill line item that we have for dumping.
So you're assuming that that twenty percent is gonna increase by forty percent to get the increased weight? Because right now, we're only, only twenty percent is doing the savings, but that's gonna creep up?
Well, cause when we did our study, if we had to take all of our recyclable materials that we generate. If we have to put all of the recyclable materials that we generate and dump it in the landfill, that would have cost us an additional eighty-seven thousand dollars a year. Because now, instead of it being free for recycling, we have to pay to put it in the landfill.
What's free?
Well, right now, it doesn't cost us for recycling. When we take it up there and dump it off at the solid waste, they don't charge us for recycling. We're not paying a tipping fee on recyclable materials.
Really? Remarkable.
Mr. Bailey?
But if I understand correctly, we're spending two hundred thousand dollars collecting the recycling. So our net savings is still a hundred and ten.
That's right.
Fifteen thousand dollars. So now, we're spending two hundred thousand dollars collecting recyclables.
Which is free.
Which, then we don't have to pay to get rid of at the dump, like we do regular garbage. So if we quit collecting it, it'll be in the regular garbage, which will cost eighty-seven thousand, which will save us a hundred and fifteen or so.
Okay, thank you.
That make, I mean, is, am I, my numbers roughly correct?
I think that's about right. And we would just have to, we would then have to reduce our curbside recycling program and neighborhood drop-offs.
Which is worth the two hundred dollars.
Yeah, and the five dollar incentive fee that you get for recycling on your bill.
But that five dollar incentive fee is only twenty percent, not the hundred percent. Cause we're only, so many people are not recycling.
That's right, only twenty percent.
I know I don't get that at any of my apartment houses. I encourage them not to recycle.
Your honor. In that same token, then we would have to increase the buying of the ninety gallons because most of the people that are recycling only have the forty-five gallon, right? So we'd have to buy more ninety gallon ones.
Yeah, your honor, so we could have that potential where if you had someone that was using a forty-five gallon, they were recycling. Now they're not gonna have recyclable materials to divert. Now they're sticking it all in the trash can. Forty-five may not be big enough, so they have to upgrade to the ninety. So in that case, we may have to get more ninety gallon containers.
Mr. Canaan?
You know, and again, I'm not real sure that's gonna be true because, you know, it looks like there's a lot to put in back into that forty-five gallon because, quote, you save plastic for a month. And really, when you're gonna be throwing plastic in your tin cans away on a weekly basis now, if you, if we go that way, you know, it's not gonna be a huge amount. I think it looks that way because when you take that bin out at the end of a month, you think, boy, that's gonna be a lot to all of a sudden throw into my forty-five gallon. But I think when you break it down on a weekly basis, what extra you're gonna be throwing away, I truly don't think people are gonna see a huge increase that way.
Yeah, I don't expect to see that, at my house at least.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on page seventy-seven, curbside recycling division. Biggest savings there was the retirement of a long-term employee.
So the two operators, is that gonna be one now, or was it three and now it's two?
I think we only had two in there to begin with. And so it's still two in there right now. It's just that the one that was in there was like an operator two or three in our pay scale, which is higher up. And they hire at a lower rate, and you have quite a bit of savings. Airport fund, that starts on page seventy-nine. Airport receives revenues from a variety of sources. We have the passenger facilities charge, which is charged each ticket that's purchased. We receive money from the county commissioners, which they have confirmed with us, or at least they put it in their tentative budget that they've approved us for fifty thousand. Security grants, gasoline tax, lease ground rentals such as the, well, not the airport cafe, but if we had a cafe up there. Hangar lease, percentage of the fuel that's sold by the fixed base operator. Rent-a-car agencies, Great Lakes landing fees, TSA lease, DCI lease, and grants from federal and state for capital projects and the general fund. So those are all kind of the revenues we get from the airport. Expenditures, we had a reduction in uniforms, gas and oil, diesel, vehicle and equipment maintenance, tools and supplies, professional and consulting. Computer supplies were increased to facilitate the installation of equipment to improve network connectivity for both the terminal and the ARF building. And remember, the ARF building is where they have fire and fire rescue, and that's at one we're gonna be upgrading. We'll talk about that later in the capital section. Promotion and development to accommodate hosting fee for the new fly riverton dot com website. Any questions about the airport?
Mr. Canaan?
I'll make my normal comment, but again, I mean, I commend staff for going through and being able to keep their division either level or a decrease. And again, it amazes me to think that we're gonna put an additional fifty-two percent increase into that airport. When you ask divisions to take cuts or remain level, it astonishes me.
Anybody have any comments?
So the total, the total amount of money that we're transferring to the airport, how does that compare to last year? Zero line item for that here?
Yeah, I believe it's five hundred and twenty-eight thousand this year, and it was four, it was three oh seven last year. And a lot of those have to do with what we've talked about before. We've had some reduction in revenues because of the incentives that we've given to Denver Air Connections and Ways of Lease space. And then we've just seen a reduction in flights coming in from Great Lakes. And so, you know, a lot of those. It's just gonna be the cost we're gonna have for the next two years, but after that, those revenues should go up. Do you have any other comments, Kyle?
Mr. Chairman, I, one of our largest reductions in revenue is coming from the county commissioners. I feel that we are very blessed and lucky that they did fund us at fifty thousand dollars. But it does represent a forty thousand dollar decrease from what they typically fund at the airport for operations. I know several requests that went to the county that received no funding at all. And I commend Commissioner Allen for sticking up for us so that we at least got the fifty thousand. But the reduction of forty thousand dollars represents one of our largest decreases in revenue. And Mr. Weaver is correct, we are projecting decreases from Great Lakes Aviation. And we will not be able to capture the revenue potential from Denver Air Connection pursuant to the FAA's air carrier incentive program where fees were waived in order to incentivize their arrival at the airport. Those fees, the waiver of fees was also incorporated as collateral for our small community air service grant, the SCASD grant that we applied for. For that grant, the city was required to put in some type of collateral, and what we did was we included the revenues that we would be receiving from those landing fees and terminal fees in order to receive that four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar grant. But yes, that pretty much rounds out our drop in revenue. Oh, excuse me, forgive me. We also are projecting a decrease in our rent-a-car line item. Avis Rent-A-Car has put us on notice that they will be leaving our terminal. Ms. Mia Harris and myself have been in contact with them, have tried to see if they'd be interested in staying at the airport, at least through the initial months of service from Denver Air Connection to see if that would increase their traffic and their business sales. We have not received a commitment from them on whether they would entertain that option.
But we did get an agreement from Denver Air Connections to rent space?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Okay.
We do have a lease agreement with Denver Air Connection.
Okay. Other funds, other funds start on page ninety. First one is the Economic Development Fund. This is, this is for an agreement that was made between the city and the Depot Foundation. The Depot Foundation purchased land for the Riverwalk, and the city agreed to pay them two thousand a month until it was paid off. And then the city gets the property. The nine-one-one funds receives or for charges on telephone landlines that must be used directly for nine-one-one equipment and maintenance. Can't be used for anything else. Fund twelve is for our one percent revenues and expenditures. This will ensure that the money we receive from the one percent sales tax will be kept separate from any other city revenues. We're estimating one point six one eight million dollars in revenues. Projects are developed by recommendations from staff. Projects are developed by recommendations from staff and the force committee to the city council. The city has seven lo- oh.
On this optional 1% sales fund, is that finished at the end of 2016, or does that, when is that terminated?
Well, it's up for vote in, in November. And so if, if it didn't pass, then we probably have a couple of months where we'd still be getting some monies left over, but I don't know the exact timeframe on that. Do you know, Courtney?
Two months.
Two months? Yeah, two or three months after November.
So it's a, it's a first of year, end of the year type thing, four years or however it runs?
Well, Your Honor, they have, I believe, 45 days after the end of the month to file the report, so it trickles in. And so I'm guessing two to three months by the time we receive our final.
Are we, we're probably not allowed to I don't know the word, correct?
Be a cheerleader?
Ah, yes, for that, or?
Yeah, we, we, we can provide factual statements and release things of the things that it's been accomplished, but yeah, we're not supposed to be out there saying you need to vote for this. And, but we, there is a PAC that has been developed to go out and, and market that. And I think they've been meeting somewhat regularly just to get the word out of all the projects. And that's why one of the big things we've tried to do is put the sign out every time we've had those projects, so people know that this is being funded by the 1% sales tax.
Mr. Bailey.
I guess, my question, and maybe it was some of what Kyle asked, but, okay, so the, the 1% sales tax is in effect, it comes up for a vote in November. Question is, does it run until June? If, if it does, or, so when is the drop dead date for the tax? So if they, if it doesn't get voted in, does it stop January 1, or June 1, or when does it stop?
Your Honor, it stops December, in December, December 31st, because it's no longer in place after the vote if the vote doesn't pass, but they have to file their reports.
Right, so it takes a couple of three months for the, the money to get here, but
Right.
tax would quit being charged on December 31st.
Yes.
Okay. And then what percentage are we planning on the 1%, the 1% to be down compared to last year? Do you know what that was?
I think we had it right at about 2 million, wasn't it, or 2.1, and now it's 1.6?
Mr. Chairman, it's approximately 20, 20% down.
20%, okay.
Okay, the city has seven loans throughout all the funds. We have three in water, three in wastewater, and one in the airport.
What, what page are you on there?
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I hadn't put the page in. They're, they're scattered throughout, so
Okay.
when you look in the water and wastewater and those are right after those funds, you'll see a little summary of, of the different loans. Any questions on the loans? I know the, the mayor brought up one question of one of those loans that we have on the water is particularly higher percent than the other. Maybe that's something we can look at to see if there's any way of refinancing or try to get a different loan at a lower percent. I think it's almost 5% and most of the other ones are two and a half.
Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey?
Those loans are all coming from the State of Wyoming Capital Fund, correct?
Yeah, I think they're, most of them are through Clean Water, Clean Water Division and the revolving, yeah, drinking water, those two. Also, we had some additional paperwork that we put on your desk that you changed out. Initially, we had the MRG program included as part of the airport fund. We have developed MOUs with Lander and with the county. The county apparently just passed that today at their meeting. One, one of the suggestions from the treasurer was that we set up a, a special revenue fund instead of having it part of the airport fund, and we thought that would be a good idea, and so that's why we've created that other fund, and that's why you've substituted those, that paperwork in there. And, and that just helps to keep it all in the same fund and not mixed with anything else. The next one is the Senior Center Endowment Fund. I think we know quite a bit about that. We are the fiscal agent for that. Per district court decision, the corpus of 881,000 cannot be spent only on the interest earned. The cash balance as of May 6th, 2016 was 950,045.12. And then we have the Riverton Rendezvous Fund.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Are we competitive on 950,045.12? I mean, where, where do you get any interest?
Your Honor, you, you, yeah, there's really not. I mean, the, the YO Star is getting less than a percent. If we had different options to invest in, you may be able to find a little bit more than that. But probably not enough to generate what they really need.
Probably, probably not in a safe area either.
Yeah. And, and that's why the state has pretty strict rules on what you can invest in, so you're not outplaying the stock market and lose all your money.
Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey?
So, where we have money that's, is this long-term money that's in this YO Star account? Or is this fairly just revolving short-term kinds of stuff? Is the first part of my question.
For the senior center?
No, so that's the only money we have in an interest-bearing account?
Oh, no. No, yeah, we have, we have money markets and CDs and, and we have some in YO Star.
And those are all long-term type, I mean, not month
Not really.
year-to-year funds, let's say, as opposed to month-to-month?
Yeah, they're, they're not really, they're not really long-term, if you want to speak to that, Courtney.
Thank you. Your Honor, we changed that about three years ago. We had to become very liquid because of the capital projects we had. So we have nothing long-term right now, except for two CDs. Mineral, minimal revenue guarantee and North Federal. And that's it. And we had a tough time getting any interest on a CD because we had to make it short-term because of the capital projects, but it was making more than YO Star. We have local banks that don't want to bid on our money.
Right, yeah, and I, I understand the scenario. I guess my question is, we don't probably want to take that money and pay off the 5% note that we're, and we could get 5% return on our money if we put it against our 5% note. But we probably don't want to have it tied up long-term like that. We want to keep some liquidity so that if we need it for one of those funds.
Well, but we paid for last year, Courtney. Correct me if I'm wrong, we did pay off a sizable note last year. And got quite a savings on that, didn't we?
We did. We paid off 1.1 million.
So we've done that in the past.
From a 19, I think it was a 1986 series revenue bond. I think we saved about $60,000 by paying it off early.
So I guess I'd, that'd be interesting to me to see how much money we have in low interest, little interest-paying notes as opposed to what our total debts are and what we have expectations for using that money for, I guess.
Well, the, the darned capital projects were eating our lunch. I mean, that North Federal just was a cash consumer. And this, this, this next one out there by Walmart's going to be the same. We don't know what we're going to get into on that wastewater. We'll open up a can of worms when we start opening that up. That will be some fun.
Courtney?
Your Honor, this governing body is acting very smart when it comes to saving money for projects. That's, that is not something that the city is used to doing. And we did, we were cautioned by auditors two years ago that said you cannot pay, keep paying for your capital projects with cash. You've got to find some other sources. So that's why we were looking into revenue bonds like the college does for North Federal. This is what's hit our cash. Councilman Larson is dead on with that. We spent 2.6 million dollars on two capital projects in three years. Where did that come from? It came from our reserves. So now our cash is trying to catch up a little bit. We did have to transfer some reserves a month ago, and this was a tough, it was a tough conversation we had when we had a budget meeting with department heads in finance, but that has, we are just now seeing what that, those capital projects have done as far as our cash perspective. So we're dealing with, I think, well, when we've got, you know, accounts set up now where we can continue to contribute to those CDs, and we can add more money if and when we need to. Supplemental funds, if there's extra money, they need to go right in those CDs.
Courtney, would you talk about YO Star for a minute? How does that work?
So YO, Your Honor.
Mm-hmm.
So YO Star is, we receive a yield on the whole, on the total funds that everyone contributes to YO Star. It's just not our portion. So we do receive, you know, a, a better interest rate than we would just by a local bank because we're making more money off of the pool and not just our funds. So the thing with YO Star is I can transfer funds in a day. They're very, very liquid. We're not held to any minimum amount at all. So we have always been, we even, we went with WIGIF, Wyoming Government Investment Fund for our CDs not too long ago because it's, it's government-based as well. So that's where we put our CDs, and they're doing very well for us. We're, we're seeing, I think, $200 to $300 a month on those now, which is good. Good for us. But that's where they are.
Okay, so the, the advantage that the city has with YO Star is that instead of having a huge bank balance over here at one of the local banks, which they would have to capitalize, correct? So, so FDIC covers us for 100,000 or?
Yes.
Okay, so in that account, you know, we've got 2 million dollars. The bank has to go out and find assets that they can pledge against that in order to protect the money that the city has on deposit. And we put it, and we put it in YO Star that is covered by the State of Wyoming. And so we don't have to mess with that, with that constant changing because then you, you spend something down, then the banks, the banks got you collateralized at 2 million dollars, and you got half a million dollars in the account. And they, but then they have to go through the process
Really.
of releasing those, that collateral in exchange for some other collateral that's less value. And so there's a lot of paperwork involved in that. And so it's easy for us to, to make those transitions through YO Star, and that way we can keep our balance in the, in the bank, under that 100,000 where FDIC covers it. And, and, and probably make as good a interest there as we would make if we tried to invest that in, in, certainly in savings accounts or in, in CDs for 30 days at a time, 90 days at a time. So even though it's still less than a percent, huh?
Well, Your Honor.
Mr. Larson.
The, the theory behind that is that that balance is many times larger than our balance. And so that, that money is being able to be lent, that larger balance lent at a better yield to us. And we share that versus the 100,000 or 50,000 or 75,000, you wouldn't get the yield on that. You just, they, they would, they would laugh and say, give me my money for holding it.
Right, right. They charge us to hold it, yeah.
Your Honor, we are going to have to be very, very cautious this year about watching our cash account because we did receive a finding two years ago, and what happened is when we were doing the airport project, we had money come in and it wasn't collateralized because Wells Fargo didn't know it came in. So our balance dropped way down one month, and then we get in a huge influx of cash, and it ups our, our deposits, right? And so they have to collateralize that. So it's going to be huge when North Federal starts. If we're not watching to make sure that we have enough pledged collateral and, and we have to make sure that Wells Fargo knows when we write the check, we can expect something coming in the next month, and so they need to watch that with us as well. So they're, they're helping us with that process, but it's going to be really big now with the airport and North Federal.
Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey?
So as I understand it, what you're saying, Courtney, is YO Star gives us the ability to, so if we get the, the grant money in, you can put it in YO Star so Wells Fargo or whoever doesn't have to go out and collateralize 2 million dollars. We can take the 1.9 million dollars and put it in YO Star, and then when we have to write the check, you can put it back in and write the check. Is that what you're saying? So that we eliminate some of this huge fluctuation in our bank account? Which costs the bank, which costs us.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we have to simply watch, watch our cash account in Wells Fargo, our main operating account. And we just use the, the YO Star as our operating reserve amount. We very rarely touch that. We, we did transfer 300,000 a month ago, but usually during the year, we don't touch our operating reserve.
So it sits there long, longer term?
Untouched, right.
But you still have this issue of the bank account ending up with too much money in it, which causes the bank grief, which
Absolutely.
they pass on down to us.
Yes.
Can you do day-to-day transfers to YO Star?
Yes, if I call them by 2 o'clock, I can.
So that's one way to maybe minimize that if you had to.
Absolutely.
Great, the final one in this is the Riverton Rendezvous Fund. The city entered it into agreement in March of 2011. Agreement stated that they would transfer their property to the city in exchange for the city being responsible for the annual event. They have a volunteer board to assist with planning and coordinating the event. The city is the fiscal agent. Their current cash balance is 44,887. Fixed cost trends, it's always interesting to try to predict energy costs. Natural gas prices and gasoline prices have been down, and we anticipate they'll be down for this fiscal year. We know, you will notice throughout the budget that a majority of the cost centers have reductions in heat, gas and oil, and diesel to accommodate the lower costs that we've incurred in this current fiscal year.
Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey?
I would, I guess I would agree that the natural gas looks like it's going to stay fairly stable, but are, are you saying your fuel costs are not going to climb over last year's number?
Yeah, we're, we're saying kind of down from
Well, without being insulting, I think you're wrong.
Okay.
Prices are climbing. They've gone up 25% since in the last three to four months. So I mean, it's fairly substantial, so I don't know if, how much that number is overall for the city, but.
Yeah, maybe we need your expert advice.
My long-term outlook would be prices are going to be climbing some. I, you know, because we saw unbelievable lows.
Yeah.
So I don't think you can plan for that. I think you need to look at maybe a three or four or five-year average, maybe. Something like that would be more reasonable. We came off of a unbelievable high, went to an unbelievable low. So last year was at the bottom of the low, and it's coming back up again. So I think if you use last year's number alone, you're going to be running into problems by the end of the year.
Yeah, and I don't think we'd use last year's completely. I think it was just a reduction amount, so I think, but we'll, we'll take a look at that again to make sure that we're
Just in the last several months, it's been fairly dramatic.
Okay.
As you can see by the, just the, on the street pump prices.
Mr. Weaver? We did take a three-year history on the, the gas prices because it was pretty high two or three years ago, and, and that's what we do with a lot of our line items. So we did take a look at that and then made, made recommendations based off of the three-year history.
Okay, so it's more of an average, not?
Yeah.
Not right.
As, as I read that, it sort of went, gave me the impression it was last year's numbers you were looking at, so I think if you got a three-year average, you're probably fine.
We want to keep seeing those go up. I know people don't like to pump up cheap, but here in Wyoming, we like gas prices a little higher.
It, it bites on one side, but it's better on the other, yeah. It, it bites on one side, but it's better on the other, yeah.
Mr. Larson.
Mike, what do you feel that it's going to go to or settle at? 260, 250?
I guess, I hate, I would hate to venture a guess, but it, I think the main thing is, is that we're coming off the absolute bottom of the market from last year. So I mean, last year is not a normal year. And I think that's the main thing you have to look at. I, I wouldn't be surprised to see two and a half range, where we're at a little over 2 now.
Right now, right now, in, in California, it's 285.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, there, you hear all the, "Well, this refinery's down, and that refinery's down." But the price of oil in California is no better or worse than it is here in Wyoming.
And California always runs more than the United States average. So I mean, you've got to almost throw California out of the mix, because they're always high. But I think, as long as you use sort of an average, I think you'll be planning on the conservative end, which is what I would recommend. And then if it's, if it doesn't go up, that's great for our budget and bad for our economy.
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Larson.
On the natural gas, did we lock in a two-year or a one-year? The reason why a two-year is one cent more per therm than a one-year.
I didn't, I didn't know you could lock in for two years.
I did.
Oh, we, oh, we did lock in for two.
Good.
I didn't have that option at home.
Projection or foreseeable future that it's going to go up? I mean, significant.
Mr. Bailey.
For this section, but in the enterprise funds, I know each of them has a customer services division printout. And I guess my question, those are almost identical, which, so my question is, did you take the overall city administrative budget and divide that into three or four equal pieces? Or is that the same one, because, you know, the salary and wage number is identical for all of them? $46,000, whatever. Is that their percentage, or is that the entire budget for them?
So Councilman Bailey, this is our HR guru, and she knows where everybody sits and what cost center they come out of. That's why I'm looking to her.
Good.
Our customer service division employs three employees, the business service manager and the two finance clerks. And they're just divided up between water, sewer, and sanitation, split equally between the funds.
So if you would add all three of those together to get the total administrative services budget line item, I guess if that's what you want to call it?
Just for, just for customer service, just for those three employees.
Right.
Yep.
So for example, I'm, I'm looking at the sanitation fund, and it says for customer service, you've got $46,800 for wages, and you've got that same amount in the other two funds. So total would be those three added together, not $46,000?
Correct.
Okay. So bill on one employee for each one, kind of an idea.
Next, next is administrative allocations on page 17. Administrative allocation provides $904,090 relief to the expense burden of the general fund. This is a decrease of $288,244 from the previous year. Staff has used this tool as a way to administer the true cost of the enterprise funds by allocation back to the general fund. The true cost of doing business on the enterprise side of the city's budget is very clear and supported by the auditing team. Contract for services. Included in this budget proposal is $335,980, allocated to nine agency line items within the city budget. All of the funding for contract for services is taken out of supplemental funding from the state of Wyoming. The city historically has funded contract for services from supplemental funding, and the remaining balance is used in capital projects. This year, each agency filled out a request. It was submitted to the finance committee. Staff's recommendation was at least a 10% reduction across the board. Some of the agency requests asked for less money, which was more than the 10%. The finance committee reviewed the requests and made a few changes. Committee felt that the firemen should get 100%. The Good Samaritan only asked for $4,000. However, they would take even a more reduction if the city would waive the city utility bills. That'd be the water, sewer, and sanitation. And that's why you see in there that the amount is $1,752. We added up what their utilities were for last year, which came up to be $2,248.
Mr. Bailey.
So just in a pure accounting way, we're, we're not really giving them any different than giving them $4,000 and letting them pay their bill?
That's right.
So would we rather have the money being accounted for in water and sewer and whatever those are utilities that we're offsetting? Or is it not, not that big a deal?
Well, you can look...
Or I'm saying, I mean...
Yeah, you can look at...
Bobbing from the sewer fund to let them get, pay less mon, or give them less money.
Yeah, in some ways, it's easier to take out of enterprise funds than it is out of the general fund. And so what savings you can have out of the general fund will benefit you. But, yeah, you're right. It's, it's kind of a shell game. I mean, if...
Your Honor.
Mr. Larson.
When we did that, Mike, we felt that it was, it was helping, that would get, that would get them the best deal. We didn't do it to save money for the, for the city or to make money. We were trying to just make sure that they, they got a good deal. And that's what they, they had requested that, and so it was a no-cell, it was a no-cell job. We just, all three voted together and felt that was the better way to do it.
And it avoids them having to worry about the bill anymore. You know, they don't have to take care of it. It's another administrative task that he has to put forward. The children's advocacy was reduced more because they closed the Riverton office. Last year, they had expanded their operations to Riverton and didn't require officers to drive to Casper. And that is why they were bumped up $1,000 last year, because of the staff and time and wear and tear on vehicles. Now they've closed their office. It was determined to go back to what they originally paid. And then injury prevention asked for $5,000, which is more than the 10%. So that's how we came up with those numbers, and we feel like the finance committee did a great job for us. Any questions about contract for services? And by the way, the two largest ones, Volunteers of America and Our Recreation, I had conversations with them and let them know of the recommendation, and they were, VOA was graceful in that in a lot of ways. They said, you know, "I think we're glad it's only 10%." But they were, they were willing to do that, and same with Our Recreation, so I appreciate that.
With the cuts up at CWC, I think a minimal cut that we gave them was a breath of fresh air.
Yeah. Employee compensation. City of Riverton is a service-based organization, which requires personnel to accomplish our task. And obviously, this is our largest expenditure when it comes to personnel. Our employees are very important to the organization and make the organization work. Local governments and counties have similar packages, where you have salary, health insurance, some sort of retirement plan, either 401K or defined benefits. So we were notified by Wyoming Educators Benefit Trust, that's WebT, that the city will not incur a health insurance increase this year. I should have the cheering going on this time. That really was great news for us, since revenues are down. And this is the first time I've seen that since I've been here of no increase at all. So we're, we're really happy for that. Dental insurance was increased by 6%. That may sound like a lot, but it's really only a cost of $2,525. You can view the plans in the budget message under employee compensation in the front of your budget manual, in the budget letter. There's a little table in there that shows what the compensation is, and which plan, and how much employees pay if you choose a single, single dependents, single and children, and family. In ways of what, what the 6% will do to employees, minimal. For, so an employee-only insurance plan, it will cost them additional 12 cents a month. For a family, it will cost an additional $1.22 a month. And then we have no increases on retirement or workers' compensation. Any questions on that? Capital. So our capital budget decreased this year to $3,650,700, plus another $1.6 million in 1% projects. So if you go in the back of your book, you'll see the capital summary plan, which is on page 105. And that goes through each project. It shows what fund it's being paid for out of, and gives you, gives you a short summary of what the project entails. On the very back page, on page 114, it lists all the projects and shows all the funding sources from supplemental funding, city funds, to grants, to loans, and reserves. So you can see that all in the very back. It's kind of a summary of all the capital projects. So I'm just going to briefly go over the capital. Feel free to stop me at any point if you need some additional information. So if we look in the general fund on page 105, we have two in there for South Federal and Riverview. These are strictly put in there for closeouts. They're nominal amounts. It's, we're just closing out those projects, not, we're starting any new project there. The North Federal project, there's $150,000 in there, and that's for the designing of the stormwater and the street lighting improvements. So that's, that's our biggest one in, in the general fund. We also have a software upgrade from our corporate Office 2007 to Office 2016. It's nine years old, but we're running into a lot of problems. And so we need to start the process of upgrading that and matching that with our server. Is there a question?
No.
Oh. A WildLink upgrade, recent upgrade at the state level has required that all connected dispatch centers to upgrade their equipment. The project was awarded to Motorola for $518,000. That was just recent. It, I don't know, a couple of council meetings, we approved that. We've also received a grant from the state, and they have combined all of the bids across the state instead of individual ones, and brought those numbers down. And so our plan is, we have the full amount in there, but whatever's left over in that, we're going to apply it to North Federal. So we don't know exactly what that'd be. It could be $30,000, it could be $100,000.
Mr. Larson.
You're saying that the Motorola of $518,000 really is going to come down, and then we're going to save that money?
Yes.
And that was because they combined the state?
Yeah, instead of each individual one having their own bids, they combined them all, and the price went down. It's, you want to talk about that, Chief?
Your Honor, Councilman, it's, it's a little complicated at the moment to understand, because Motorola has done a couple of things. They're trying to change the contract and split the prices out. So we're having a hard time getting a final dollar amount from them. We did get some grant funding guaranteed from the state. That's over, it's about $138,000 as it stands today. So we're going to see both a reduction and that grant money to help offset the cost of the, of the system.
Okay, and then in the water fund on page 106, we've got a server upgrade divided among three enterprise funds, which, which builds on a project that was in fiscal year 2015, 16. Staff has experienced hard drive failures on about half our total storage capacity. You also see North Federal project in water here. That's $10,000 to design water distribution improvements. So these are all in preparation of the big North Federal project in, in the next fiscal year. Riverton Water Supply, $1 million has been budgeted to begin construction on Phase 3, which is the last phase of the project, which involves the construction of a transmission line from the airport road reservoir to Riverview Road. We have a grant loan for this project?
On this project here, the Riverton Water Supply, do we have all the easements that we need? Not yet, so...
Yeah, we, we were just talking about that today. I mean, it's, it's tough, because we have, we have two tribes that have agreed to it. But yet, one wants to do a license agreement, one wants to do an easement. And the BIA won't recognize two different ones. And so we're, we're at a stalemate in the sense that unless someone's willing to change and go with the other one, I don't know what we're going to do. So we're still budgeting for that, but until that happens, we're, we can't move forward until we get that easement.
Thank you.
We have roof repairs on the water treatment plant and well nine. That's $12,000 to repair, repair the roofs that are leaking. So wastewater fund on page 106. We got North Federal in there, $10,000 for design of wastewater collection improvements. Wastewater plant improvements. We have several pieces of equipment that are wearing out and need to be rebuilt and replaced. And we have $38,700 to cover those costs. Cliffview Lift Station, this is a project started in our current budget, but because of the equipment, deliveries will be pushed into the next fiscal year. We have $20,000 allocated for this next, next fiscal year to complete the project. Sanitation fund in, on page 107. We have a refuge truck in there. That's actually in this budget, but because of delivery issues, it's not going to actually be delivered to us until our next budget, so that's just being transferred over. Landfill remediation, we have $50,000 to begin work on entering the program and begin the first step towards cleaning up our existing landfill. This is for engineering to do a more in-depth analysis of the options so a decision can be made by the council.
Mr. Larson.
Which one is that?
Our old landfill?
Is that the baseball diamond?
Yes. Yeah, over, over next to the river.
That's the one where we had the individual come and say that we are reaching some threshold points on water sampling, and he couldn't give us any of the threshold points or what the contaminants was or any of that flow rates. In fact, it was a disappointing amount of information that he had. That's the one.
That's the one. Yeah, so it's, it's, really, we need to do a little more in-depth analysis on that, because remember, there was different options of leaving it where it is existing and having a lining built around it and keep, keep it right there. Another option was to remove all the waste and haul it to the land or landfill. Or the other one was to pump and treat. So suck the water out, treat it at our wastewater treatment plant, and then discharge it in the river. So there were, there was a couple, I think there was at least five or six options that were presented. But there wasn't enough information with that to actually make a good decision. And so we need a more in-depth analysis on that, so the council can look that over and make sure that we're making the best decision. Airport fund on page 108. We have a localizer. That's $300,000 for the closeout of the project. That's all part of the runway. We have the ARF vehicle. So we're required to purchase a new fire and emergency response vehicle. $80,000 is cost covered at 97.5% by the federal and the state. And then since the ARF truck is... And then, since the ARF truck is wider and won't fit in the building, we've got to make building modifications to the...so, you can house the ARF truck, and that's at a cost of $270,000, and 97.5% is covered by federal and state. We also have an environmental assessment prior to the jet service coming and EA is required. Total cost of that is $3,500. 80% comes from the state. And then, the mowing equipment is awarded in the current budget. I think we just did that at the last meeting. However, the delivery will be again in next fiscal year. That's why we have to carry it forward. And the snow removal equipment, updated existing snow removal equipment, $30,000 has been budgeted, 90% covered by the state.
Your Honor?
Mr. Bailey?
Okay, on these numbers you're quoting us, so, for example, the $270,000 for the building modification, you're saying 97.5% is covered by state and federal grants?
That's right.
That's...so, we are only paying 2.5% of 270, or is the 270 the 2.5%?
No, that's...so, if you look on the very back page, you'll break that down under what the city funds option is, so it's very small, because I think our total capital project budget in the airport is like $79,000 for all those projects.
All right. And then, we have to do an environmental assessment to have jets land when we've had jets land here before? Not that we're going to make sense of the federal government, but...
Your Honor, yes, that is correct. This is the final phase of an environmental assessment study that was actually began several years ago, and in order for us to have jet service here, they have to do an EA because there will be noise pollution and other new pollutions entering in the area, and they want to make sure that it does not affect the environment in an adverse way. So, yes, we have to do that.
Is that a baseline? So, that will be a baseline? Since we haven't...we've got a baseline right now, and when we start, we're going to have data, and we'll compare that all along to make sure it's not going up or down or just tracking together.
Your Honor, I'd have to follow up on that. I'm not sure how they perform the EA. I'd have to follow up with you on that.
And then, Your Honor, I have one more question.
Mr. Bailey?
For now. On these items that we've already approved in this year's budget but are not going to be paid until next year's budget, are we able to move the money that we already had allocated for last year into this year's budget? Or does that...how does that work? So, we already had the money in this year's budget, but we're not going to spend it until next year, so do we just get to put it in our savings account and just use it, or do we have to budget for that twice?
Mr. Weaver, would you like me to answer that?
Yes, Courtney, please.
Councilman Bailey, that's probably going to be in the budget amendment that's going to be presented to you. So, it'll decrease our expenditures, it'll decrease our revenues, and then, it's already been added into the fiscal year budget deal approved June 7th. So, third meeting in June, you'll do the budget amendment that will take those projects out, and yes, it carries it forward as far as the money.
Right, so, the $100,000 that we're going to spend this year, we're not adding it as revenue for next year, but we're adding it as expenditure coming out of savings from last year?
If it's corresponding revenue, it will go with the expenditure.
Right, you know, the fire truck we're buying or whatever, or the mower for the airport. Okay, so, we have budgeted that for this year, so we already have revenue to give us the money to buy the mower, and we had an expense to purchase the mower, right?
Right.
Okay, and so, this year's budget's going to get changed and lower the expenses. So, what do we do with our profit from this year that we didn't spend? We can carry that over to next year?
Profit is a very...
I know. I'm sorry, I'm from the real world. The money we haven't spent this year that we already planned on spending...
Is cash carryover, which is used to reduce tax requirement in the next budget.
Mr. Bailey, since it's grant-funded, it's very important for us to recognize the revenue when we recognize the expenditure. So, we have to make the expense first and then apply for the reimbursement for the grant fund. So, that's why it needs to happen in the same fiscal year. We've had that happen with vehicles many times. We purchased them in one year and get paid for them in another year, or they're in the budget, and that's when we kind of straighten things out a little bit according to the purchases when they don't happen in this current fiscal year like we anticipated. But since these are...most of these projects are grant-funded, we want to make sure that the revenues and the expenditures mirror each other in the same fiscal year.
So, you move both sides over?
Absolutely, absolutely.
On something that we're just buying out of our own funds, you have to just use it as...so, you just leave it in the fund, spend it for next year?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so, in conclusion, preparation of the proposed budget has been a team effort. The management team has approached the budget in a spirit of cooperation. I'd just like to recognize a few of our budget team. We've got Courtney, Mike, Kyle, Sandy, Gloria, Kristen, and Mia. We had a lot of meetings over the course of six weeks. Not all of them most pleasant either, but in the end, we're able to come together as a group and agree on a plan to go forward, and so, I'd like to commend them for their efforts. And like we said before, the plan is to adopt this budget on June 7th, which is two weeks from now.
Mr. Morrison?
If you've done those over three or four years, what is our accuracy towards the budgets? Are we within 4%, 3%, 10%? Where are we?
You mean, in our existing budget?
No. In the prepared budget from 2000 and whatever, we were right on, we were over, we were under. The next one, we were over, we were under. In other words, using your best judgment and historical data, where have we been? Are we close to hitting the target, or are we off a little bit? That's all.
Well, I think this year, we've been off a little bit. That's why we decided we needed to cut some of the expenditures as of starting in May because we felt like sales tax and use tax was down more than we had budgeted for. But in the past, it's been remarkable how close we've been. I mean, almost get on. Any other questions?
Do we have any idea what our North Federal's going to...
Mr. Morrison, you're too far...
Do we have any...do we have any idea what that North Federal's going to...
Mr. Chairman, out of the general fund, right now, we're projecting about $5 million. That's for detention pond, stormwater improvement, and then, street lighting. For the enterprise funds, the figure escapes me, and so, please take this as an estimate, but it's about $2 million out of enterprise funds for water and sewer upgrades. Now, I do want to clarify, we have received funding for the streetlights, so that does help. It will still be an expensive project, though.
I have a...
Mr. Bailey?
Comment, I guess, and I know this may or may not be the right time or venue, but well, it's the right venue. I had a representative of mine, and some of you attended the Eclipse meeting, and if I...I think Holly was there, you can correct my numbers if I'm not correct, but some of the numbers are expecting visitors in the millions range?
No, 10,000.
10, 10.
Okay. I guess, and what I got thinking about, okay, so, we're going to have this big deal in the summer of 2017, in August, when we're going to have a ton of visitors, all the motels are booked up, tons of extra traffic, tons of extra services needed, et cetera, et cetera, and we're going to have North Federal ripped out by its guts.
Uh, uh, uh.
I guess, my question is, since as much as I loathe the thought, I think maybe we need to ask DOT if we shouldn't put this off a year. As bad as North Federal is, and as much as I would love to get it just done and out of our hair, I think we're taking the opportunity to present a great...put a great foot forward for Riverton and Fremont County, and they're going to come here, and we're going to have the whole place just gutted.
Oh, you mean, the greatest memory they had was the four-hour wait out of town?
We're on bumper bump of traffic to get through Riverton to try to find a restaurant which every one of them can't get into their driveway.
Well, 90% of them people are going to be here. We live in big cities, so they're used to all the...
And it's just...it's a comment, and, you know...
Your Honor, I know at that meeting, they were approached about that idea, and I think they said, "No, it's going to happen." But I...I mean, if the council feels strong enough about that, and you want to make an edict that I write something saying that our council feels like we want to push that off, you know, let me know, because it's just people telling them you should push it off. They haven't had any formal requests by people that are, I guess, more in the power to say so.
You know, I've got, for example, my North Federal station that's down here, you know, we're planning a fairly substantial facelift upgrade, all that, but I sure am not going to try to have it...I'm going to try to have it either done or not started by the middle of August because I can't afford to miss that five days with 10-plus-thousand extra people in Fremont County. You know, I mean, it's...so, it changes a lot. There's a lot more than just North Federal that gets put into that equation, and I guess, I don't know what everybody else's opinion is, but to me, we ought to be making that a grand time for people to come visit as opposed to making it an obstacle.
What do we need, Your Honor?
What do we need?
Yeah.
Right now?
For a suggestion, let that be postponed.
Better...I mean, the biggest thing that was brought up is if we could just figure out a way to make sure that the businesses are still getting the money for those five days, because it is a huge event. I mean, it's not going to be just some little quick thing, you know? Even though the eclipse is only going to be like two minutes long, they're going to be here for three, four, five days. So, I mean, even if there's a way that we can maybe detour somehow so that they can still get to the businesses, I don't really know what the solution is, but it was a huge concern. I got asked that probably 30 times of what we're going to do.
And, Your Honor, the other option that I know one of them was talked about was asking them to maybe not work on that weekend, or, you know, take three days off from working and make sure everything's cleared out and easy passable and...
Well, yeah, and we're far enough out that, I mean, it's impossible to say, "Here's where they're going to be working, here's what they're going to have tore up." You know, to plan that a year and a half ahead is extremely challenging. And I think to tell DOT or a contractor that the week of this, we don't want you doing anything is going to...you can if you want, but they're going to leave dirt piles on each end and go, "There you go, we're going home," you know? It...I don't know. Maybe it's just nothing we can do about it, but it's a little concerning to me.
Would we have consensus to write DOT a letter and say...and tell them about this, that it is a concern for the city and wonder what...
What options are?
What the options would be, what accommodations might take place?
Sure.
I don't think it's worth asking.
I'd go along with that.
Okay, let's investigate it.
Yeah.
Okay, bring it up to them as a formal, you know, letterhead, okay? Let's do that. It's kind of like, you know, they probably have got, you know, all this money stacked up and, you know, and a plan to spend it in some particular order and that type of thing, and they may not have any flexibility, but it would be a blessing to put it off a year.
For us financially, that'd give us one more year to try to stash some money away.
That's right, that's right. It'd be a blessing.
Your Honor? I've talked to a few people, mainly Cody Beers, and he says it probably...his thought was it probably wouldn't go to bid until 2017, so it probably wouldn't get started until 2018. Works for me. So, there's that possibility, too. Maybe you could get ahold of Cody Beers and see if he knows anything.
The last thing I had heard is that the bidding will not even...they won't even put anything out to bid until the middle of this summer, which means very little's going to get done. Even if they got it out to bid, they wouldn't have enough construction season to do a whole lot, maybe a little preliminary kinds of stuff, which, you know...
Your Honor, we have received communication from Wyatt that they do plan on bidding that in the late winter of 2017, maybe February. However, they do feel that even with that bid date, that they will start construction in June of 2017. So, at the time of the eclipse, they will be at least two months into construction, if you imagine.
Well, we just don't...we just won't advertise that.
Get them here, they're stuck, right?
Yeah, right.
Close the roads after they get here.
Yeah, that's called a...
Extra flagmen is what we, you know...it could very well be that, you know, if they stopped and thought about that with a big influx of people, maybe the headache of trying to operate that, you know, flagging and that type of thing would be such that they would say, "Hey, for this week, we're just not going to do anything," and try to get it kind of passable. Okay, anything else with the budget? I'm ready to adjourn. Got a motion?
So, moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your vote's aye.